Order at six thirty, the City of North St. Paul Planning Commission Regular Meeting of October third, two thousand and twenty four. And if you would do roll call, that would be wonderful.
Commissioner Wise?
Here.
Commissioner Alvarez?
Here.
Commissioner Kane Burbak is absent. Commissioner Gadboy?
Here.
Commissioner Muick?
Present.
And Commissioner Rothie is also absent, and Chair Belize.
Present.
Also present this evening are Jason Nordby, City Council Liaison, and Regul Graham, the Community Development Director.
Excellent, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to adopt the agenda, which is pretty short tonight. One primary item. Does anybody have anything they want to add to subtract from or otherwise change? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I'll move to approve the agenda for tonight.
I'll second.
That was a motion from Commissioner Wise, a second from Commissioner Muick. All in favor, say aye. Aye. It's unanimous. Then hopefully you've all had a chance to review the meeting minutes from September fifth, regular meeting. I would entertain a motion for approval of the September fifth meeting minutes unless anybody has anything to modify.
I'll make that motion?
A motion from Commissioner Gadboy, second.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Alvarez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are good with that. The meeting is now open to the public for items not on the agenda. There are a few members of the public here. If there's anything you want to speak on, not on the agenda, the floor is open for that. Looks like that is not happening, so we're down to the public hearing. So if we could have the staff report.
Absolutely, thank you. So tonight we are holding a public hearing for a conditional use permit application at twenty five eighty six Seventh Avenue East. The city did receive a conditional use permit application from the building owner and tenant. I think it's Gervais or Jarvis Court Properties LLC and Al Cordia Care LLC respectively, for a parcel located on the corner of Seventh Avenue East and Charles Street North. The applicant proposes to open Al Cordia Care at Kendall's Corner, which operates as a day support facility for younger adults with disabilities, all under the age of sixty five, under Minnesota's Home and Community Based Services Medicare Medicaid waiver programs, as well as employment services. This is a daytime program in which adults with disabilities will come to their location for up to six hours a day. The applicant proposes to serve a demographic of, demographic of adults with disabilities, for example, those with developmental disability waivers by providing life skills training, enrichment programs, and activities, and community integration through trips into the community. They would also provide employment services, which prepare individuals for work and support for them entering the workforce. Life skills training would include communication, community access, independent living, money management, problem solving, and conflict resolution, self-care, and socialization. Enrichment activities would include arts and crafts, exercise, and music therapy. The parcel in question is a zero point eight six acre size parcel, is located in the M one downtown mixed-use zoning district. There are several adjacent properties, most of which are non-residential. There are some residential uses in the nearby area, but most are commercial properties. The subject property is located, as I mentioned, in the M one district, in city code one five four, Appendix A, Table Three, does allow for, it's called daycare facilities. Daycare sometimes gets confused with childcare. In this case, it would not be. Serving thirteen persons or more as a conditional use. Daycare facilities are allowed as a conditional use in this district. So section, like I mentioned, section code one five four point zero zero four F, when it comes to conditional use permits, may be issued for a use that may be allowed in a particular zoning district, provided that the Planning Commission and then the City Council finds that the use is compatible with the district's character and does not overly burden anything else in the localized area. After some review, we do find that the proposed use is anticipated to be suitable within the zoning district, and there are other similar uses in zoning districts nearby. There is a whole host in your packet this evening of other considerations that the Planning Commission should consider, and eventually the City Council. We listed them in your packet this evening. We have found that all of the conditions, or the proposed use, actually would comply with all of these standards and conditions. We are not anticipating any issues as a result. The final thing is that, I don't know if the applicants are here. Yes, okay, good. So they can help answer any questions that the Planning Commission may have, but otherwise the, the Planning Commission should open the public hearing and allow any interested individuals from the public to make comment.
All right. Are there any, Commissioners have any comments or questions about the staff report? I think I have one. Related to the aerial view image in your report, the rectangular parking area, that's city-owned? Am I understanding that correctly? Because there's the building, and then there's the rectangle down south of it.
Yeah, there's, there's a, it's, it's an address that's labeled as Zero, Charles Street North. That is also owned by the same entity.
Oh, it is?
Yes.
The, the zero?
The zero.
What about the yellow rectangle that's south of it?
Yeah, twenty five eighty six is those two, those two properties. It's, it's the main building, and then further south down Charles is a-
But there's a gap in between this.
There's a gap in that zero.
That zero is the gap?
That also is owned by the same entity.
Okay, okay, that's what I was thinking. That's not parking per se. That's service area.
Yeah, surface area loading and unloading.
Yeah, okay. There's a trash enclosure there and other things.
I couldn't tell you why the parcel is separated into two right there. I don't have that history, but that is-
Yeah, it kind of feels like it all should be-
One together.
Together, but don't know, don't know how the ownership works. That was, I think, the only question I had.
The only one I have at this point is the letter from the concerned resident. Was that received before staff looked, I guess, did staff take that into consideration, or was that received after staff looked at the situation?
So that, staff did, completed their report, and then after we sent out the public hearing notice, that's when we got that.
Okay.
That letter. And that app, the, the person who owns that property is adjacent to this parcel.
Okay. And we, there's certainly room for discussion after public hearing, so.
Yeah.
With that, I would ask if the applicants have anything they would wish to add for discussion? No?
Do you really want to add other than just the, if you're to answer the question?
Okay. In that case, I would open the public hearing at six thirty eight. Make it six thirty nine, because there goes the clock. So if anyone from the public would wish to speak on the topic. And if not, you would-
Am I the only public here, I guess?
You are very welcome. Yeah, please step forward, state your name and address, and so you're on the mic. That way we don't lose you.
Good evening, everyone. Nathan Pesky, twenty six fifty seven Fifth Avenue. I apologize, I couldn't pull up your report. I was just wondering, what are the, the hours of this facility and the number of people that are going to be there during the day?
Which sounds like a good question for the applicant.
Please roll call.
My name is Dawson. I live at twenty three hundred Central Avenue Northeast, Minneapolis. So the, the building hours are from six AM to six PM, I believe that's correct.
Seven?
Was it?
Seven?
Seven AM to six PM. So program hours would run from seven AM till approximately four PM, and the capacity in terms of the number of adults being served is thirty five. So consider thirty five as a maximum, plus a certain number of staff, potentially fifteen, twenty staff at maximum. So all in all, we're looking at fifty to sixty people onsite, and everybody would be offsite by six PM.
And if I could just ask a follow-up question, maybe directed to the attorney or someone up here. There's all kinds of large things that are going on in downtown. What makes this require conditional use permit with the meeting, whereas all that, is this different than that, or is this just a routine thing for any business in downtown?
Can you address that? Yeah, so conditional use permits are related to the specific use of a property, and usually those uses tend to have, such as this, where you have a number of individuals in, in one spot at one time. It looks at other things like traffic control, traffic flow, and, and also if there's any issues related to the use to the surrounding properties. So that's, that's why they're, they're labeled as conditional uses, which means that you have to come before the City Council, the Planning Commission and City Council, to get approval before you can enter into that business.
And, and is this larger than some of the other things downtown, or what, what makes this unusual?
It's, I wouldn't call it anything unusual. I wouldn't use that word. I would just say that just the use, with the requirements of vehicles coming and going, people being dropped off, and just the sheer number of people that are going to be at the site.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Well, that being the case, and no other public present, I will close the public hearing at six forty two. So questions or concerns? I think, Cameron, you, you brought up the, the letter.
Right. I do have a concern based on the letter, the language that was in it, and I definitely understand, you know, whoever wrote the letter is coming at it from their own point of view, and they may, it may or may not be particularly accurate. I'm just trying to get a feel for the situation. It states, or at least it sounds like it's stating that everybody that's coming to use the facility is in their own transport vehicle. Is that the situation, or are, do you have one vehicle serving multiple, I shouldn't say just one vehicle, but do, do vehicles serve multiple clients? Because that will make a bit of a difference about how busy that side street gets.
Sure. So first thing to point out is that the activity that they're referring to has nothing to do with Al Cordia Care, because we don't occupy that space yet. So that's one thing to point out. Another thing that I would mention is that most of the individuals who are going to be attending this site for programming do not provide their own transportation. They are either, they either have transportation provided by the program or use other publicly available services like Metro Mobility.
Mm-hmm.
So we don't expect to have sixty people driving every day to this site. Staff would likely be using their own transportation for those that have it, and then there would be some pickup and drop-off. But again, to, to the, to the letter that was submitted, we haven't been occupying that space yet.
Right.
So anything that they have to say doesn't really pertain to anything we've, about our program.
No, I was just more concerned with how much it might be adding to the impact. So if it's, obviously if it's, I shouldn't say obviously, but I know from my own knowledge, if it's Metro Mobility, those drivers are going to drop and, drop and roll as quickly as they can, so.
I, I think that the letter that was part of the packet is, is important for us to consider, only from the perspective of, are there conditions that we should add to our recommendation that would help to alleviate any potential for problems like that? And it sounds to me like traffic, running, you know, idling vehicles, things like that. Yeah, okay, I can, I can understand how that could potentially be objectionable. Is it something that we can put conditions on?
Absolutely. You know, internally, in the Community Development Department, we had, we had talked about any requirements relating to any pickup and loading and unloading of, of individuals off of the public street.
Mm-hmm.
You know, they, they have, obviously, that property labeled zero, and then also the parking lot to the south, should be plenty of ample space to get off the street, to, you know, reduce any potential backups on street. So that's, that's something that I think the Planning Commission could entertain. You know, idling of vehicles, what, what is that definition?
It's going to happen in winter.
Is that one minute? Is that ten minutes? Is that an hour? I don't, you know, that's-
I don't think we can control that.
Yeah.
I, I think it's hard enough, it would be hard enough to control where they stop.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think it would be advisable to try to build in some, some sort of encouragement to pull off the road and utilize that space, that property, property lot zero.
I think you could entertain a condition of, of approval that states something to the effect of passenger loading and unloading shall occur off of the public street.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think they would be doing that anyways, but you put it in writing, it's there.
Well, and, and there are, there are parking spaces there for the existing functions that are probably, those diagonal spots are probably almost big enough.
Sure.
Would be adequate for loading conditions. In other words, at least pulling off of the drive lane. Although, on the other hand, Charles is a very wide road at that point, so it's, it's not that we're doing any kind of total blockage, even if a car, even if a vehicle stops in the lane, it's not a total blockage of the road, so.
Could we possibly post the areas further away from that as, like a no waiting zone between seven and seven, or something like that? Or make it perhaps a resident parking only for a block or so? I'm just trying to think of ways that we could try to keep the waiting vehicles away from those residential properties somehow or another.
I, I would say, you know, provided that any transport vehicle, whether it's a Metro Mobility or a van, you know, I'm thinking like a fifteen-passenger ban.
Yeah.
Something like that. You know, I, I think they could adequately pull into those diagonal spaces, allow passengers to either enter or exit the vehicle, and back up without any issues. I, I don't see a need to, to do any sort of signage. Like I said, I, I think, you know, at most, you could probably just put, put a condition of approval in there that states unloading, loading and unloading of, of passengers shall occur off the public street. I think that covers us pretty good.
Is the park, diagonal parking considered on the public street, however?
It's, it's public parking.
It's public parking.
It's not in the public street.
Not in the street.
That's, that's the delineation.
Right.
The only thing I'm thinking of is in terms of, you know, somebody that's coming for a pickup, and, you know, if they get there and they have to sit there and wait for fifteen or thirty minutes for the individual to get out front because of, you know, classes or appointments or whatever, that, that was the only thing I was thinking of, is to try to cut that possibility down somewhat.
And at that point, then I would encourage the, the program owners to encourage the drivers to pull into this off the street, is what I would say.
And there's plenty of space there, I think.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's kind of where I was thinking, that, I mean, these aren't your own transportation vehicles that you guys control, right? So I think we could say exactly what you just said. We could encourage it, but there's only so much you can do if it's Metro Mobility, right? You don't have control over what they do necessarily, but-
And, and to be fair, if it's causing an issue, you know, somebody's going to complain about it, and our police department, police department will go out there and assess the situation.
Right.
It, it would get taken care of.
Yeah.
That's a nice thing. It is only, what, about a thirty-second drive from the police department, so.
Right.
So program-provided transportation is a service that Al Cordia Care will offer. It would be up to the person receiving services to work with their care team to assess what their best transportation solution is for them. Just one thing I would like to just add here, just so that it's also on people's minds, is that we are dealing with people with disabilities, so I would just encourage you, in any decisions that you make, ensuring that you're also upholding the rights of people with disabilities to have that sort of greater assistance to be able to access-
Oh, yeah.
-the building, access the facility. Thank you.
Absolutely. I, I think, I'd like there to be a condition added in for our recommendation, but, but I'd like it, I'd like to make sure that we're acknowledging the fact, well, certainly what, what he just mentioned, but also the fact that it's an operational thing, not necessarily under the control of this user.
Yep.
This occupant. So there, there's a lot of variables there that we don't necessarily control, but to have an, to include something that is an encouragement, and I think your, your comment about not unloading on the street, on the active street lanes, I think is, not loading and unloading there is fine, and it should be very doable without, without hindering the operation. So that's what I'd like to see.
I just was going to ask, what, what was your intended, like, routine? How, how did you see loading and unloading happening? Is it, if we say, you know, loading on and off the street is an issue, is that, was that something you were intending to do, or not necessarily?
So as you pointed out, limited control that Al Cordia has over what Metro Mobility does, if clients are utilizing that option, or are being dropped off by family members or what have you. From Al Cordia Care's perspective, I think we would be more than willing and able to utilize that angled parking when available. Would, wouldn't want to be hamstrung in a situation where we're going to get the cops called if, for whatever reason, there was not enough room, maybe still piled up in the, the winter, to have loading and unloading be accessible. I would also say that Al Cordia Care is an organization that prides itself on respect for its neighbors and building relationships, and maintaining positive relationships. So knowing that that's a concern, and that there has been a preference expressed to not have cars idling near some nearby houses, we would definitely keep that in mind and do our best to be as discreet as possible.
Mm-hmm. Great, thank you.
So I'm looking at the Google Maps of this area, and I see van, van unloading section on Seventh Avenue, and I'll see van unloading one on Charles. Is there any, if, if it becomes congested with vans that need to unload people with mobility aids, is there any possibility of giving another van unloading spot?
I, I think that is absolutely a possibility to add additional handicap parking stalls.
Because we're talking a lot more people that are coming into this building, so.
Yeah, that's certain, you know, and then we can work with the applicant as, you know, if we're noticing that it is an issue, we can certainly strike more.
That might all be idling.
Yeah, yeah. Just, again, just to get them off of the, of the drive aisle.
Yeah.
That's kind of the whole point.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not anticipating that, you know, a vehicle's going to pull up there and sit in the drive aisle for thirty minutes. I, people don't do that, hopefully, not going to.
I would recommend that staff check with Metro Mobility and see what directions they give their drivers.
Sure.
Because the last thing we want to do is to do this with the predicate that they're going to drop in the parking lot, and then later we find that Metro Mobility doesn't allow their drivers to do that.
Sure. We can certainly follow up with them. Yep.
Another good reason to give more handicap stalls, potentially.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like there to be a condition, but I'd like it to be as flexible as possible. I guess that's the way I'd like to put it.
And I think if you, if you set the condition in a sense of loading and unloading shall occur off of the public street drive lane or-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think if you do that, you specifically call the drive aisle, then I think they can pull into the parking stalls.
Yep.
Pull into the parking lot, or the, I mean, there's other ways we can-
Besides, it, it's a, it's a, it's a directive that, okay, somebody might not follow that in every circumstance, in every, on every winter day, but in general, at least it's there, it's present.
Yep.
There's an enforceable thing if an enforcement needs to be done.
Absolutely.
That does also bring up a corollary that the city needs to think about, in that if we're going to ask them to load and unload in that parking lot, and it is a city parking lot, that needs to be one of the first things plowed in the wintertime.
It is not a city parking lot.
It's not a city parking lot.
No, it isn't.
It's not a city parking lot.
It isn't.
Okay, I thought you said that it was.
No, it's, it's owned by the same entity.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, my, my mistake.
But I, I do know that the Public Works does work to plow public parking stalls, especially on those busy streets. It's one of the first things they do.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, with an active business like that, they'll, they'll get down there.
Yep. And they usually do that, you know, in the overnight hours, so that come seven AM, when, when they're ready and open.
Yeah.
It should be clear. Unless it's actively snowing.
Right, right. Right, right.
Well, I think I'm prepared to entertain a motion to proceed with the recommended, the recommended resolution for the City Council with the one condition that was spoken.
I would like to add one comment, if I may. I believe what they said is accurate, that the problems that were described in the letter predate them even thinking about this.
Right.
As a City Council liaison, I've also had the residents come complain about this
area too. One of the solutions I would like to offer, not as an amendment or a condition to them, but as a possible solution, is offer the residents on the east side of Charles what was talked about, from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, residential parking only by permit. And like I say, not a condition upon them because this is existing currently, but as a recommendation possibly to the City Council, and this has somewhat been talked about, to approve this but to not exasperate an existing issue that they're not adding to, to change that parking on the right side. But I don't believe it's fair to put that as a condition upon them.
Agreed. I would suggest that staff could interact with those residents specifically and come up with a solution that, what would help? You know, that kind of, have that kind of...
Maybe include Eighth Street, Eighth Avenue on that too, because if they suddenly can't park in Charles, they might move into Eighth.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion.
All right. Motion from Commissioner Muick. Is there a second?
And I should specify that is given both the condition and the recommendation.
Yes.
As part of this motion.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Weiss. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? No nays? You know, we have an agenda item for commission business action items and recommendations and it's blank, which means it's time for reports from commissioners. Do commissioners have anything to report? I'll start with you, Mr. Muick.
Yes, actually I do have something to report and I'm not sure city staff is aware of this or not, but the Metro Transit has released their expansion plan program for, I think, the next five years. One of the things that they have on their plan is discontinuing the 64 route through North St. Paul and replacing that with a bus that will operate from Maplewood Mall through North St. Paul and terminate down at the Larpenter Shopping Center, which would mean that everybody from North St. Paul, if they want to go into town, would have to change. And I think that that's something that the city, I'd recommend the city take a stand against that change and in favor of saying that if they're going to keep the 64 route, which they need to, that it would be better for it to operate through North St. Paul and to get rid of the other stem that covers the White Bear Avenue because the 54 operates on that segment going downtown anyway. So what you would have under their plan, you'd have an express bus to downtown and a local bus to downtown, basically operating over the same route except for a few streets within the city, and we would have to change. And, you know, changing buses is not a big deal, but if it's in the middle of winter and, you know, it's 20 degrees below outside, like I say, I just wanted to bring that out, that that was in their plan. It doesn't have a deadline as to when that's going to happen, but there, the plan is out there for public comment now, so.
Thank you for bringing that up. That's very important and I had not seen that, so thank you. Very good. I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Any other reports?
I don't have anything.
Well, that's a good one, so. I don't have anything either.
I would like to add one thing. I would like to encourage everyone to inform themselves on who they choose to vote for. There are two open City Council seats. One of the ways you can choose to do that is, one of our wonderful residents is hosting a get-to-know the people who are running for City Council that is hosted at the American Legion on October 24th at 6:00 PM.
Is that being sent out or will that be sent out to, in the city newsletter?
I think it might already be in there.
It's not technically a city event, so I don't know, I don't know if the person...
Fairly certain we have it in there.
Okay. So I was going to say, I thought I'd seen something about a get-together, but I wasn't sure if it was the same one.
I get it through my social secretary, so. I get it either through the newsletter or through Facebook because she's connected with all the Facebook, local Facebook groups, so.
I know it has been posted on the Friends of North St. Paul Facebook group.
Yes.
That may be where I saw it.
Very good. Very good reminder, thank you. That's the only one that I know of as far as getting to know the resident, the candidate.
As far as I know of right now...
And there are three candidates for two seats, correct?
There are three candidates for two seats.
Okay.
Yes.
Have they put out any sort of documentation as to where they stand on different issues?
That is the choice of every individual running. I hesitate to comment on that in a public forum.
I seem to recall, I'm trying to remember if I'd seen a website or anything like that that was developed for any of them, but I don't, I don't think so.
Are there any candidates? Again, I'm sorry, I'm newer to North St. Paul. Are there candidate forums run by any civic organizations? I know in my previous city, the League of Minnesota, sorry, the League of Women Voters did, conducted a candidate forum each year or each election cycle. Is there anything like that around here?
The person organizing this at the Legion has been doing this for years. She is, if I get this wrong, I apologize, but she has head of the Women's Auxiliary of the Legion, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then traditionally, the candidates also speak at the North St. Paul Business Association. I don't know if that event happened this year. I apologize, I don't have that information, but traditionally those are the two organized information gathering sessions in the city of North St. Paul.
I don't think it has at the businesses, at the North St. Paul Business Association. I haven't made the last couple, but I didn't, my wife's in it too and she didn't mention that.
Okay.
I can double-check with her.
The League of Women Voters did do a forum with the school board candidates. And I'm not sure if that is up on YouTube or not, but it was very informative.
Hmm, that would be good to look up. Okay. All right.
Good point about getting informed, though.
Yeah, very much so.
Getting to the home stretch.
With that being, I think all of our business, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
A motion to adjourn from Commissioner Gadboy. Second?
I'll second it.
Second, from Commissioner Alvarez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.